...location of its meetings, other than special emergency or continued meetings, at least three working days in advance by posting such notice on its official public government website, placing such notice in a prominent public location at which notices are regularly posted, and placing such notice at the office of the clerk of the public body, or in the case of a public body that has no clerk, at the office of the chief administrator. Reasonable notice under the circumstances of special emergency or continued meetings shall be given contemporaneously with the notice provided to the members of the public body conducting the meeting. Ms. Jackson, has today's school board meeting been properly certified?
Yes, Dr. Gabriel. On April 2nd, 2019 for item one, and April 25th for items two and three, notice was provided fulfilling all criteria of Virginia Code, Chapter 37.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Do we call this meeting to order? We're going to get right into our work session. We have a great first item on the agenda that will require a vote. Dr. Boone?
Thank you. Dr. Gabriel, members of board, ladies and gentlemen. We have the opportunity to apply for a VSBA award as it relates to our workforce readiness. We've provided the information we're submitting. We're asking the board to support the submission of the Girls Engineering Program, Robotics Program at Granby High School.
Is there a motion to approve the submission for the Workforce Readiness Award?
I move that we support the -- whatever. Let me say that again. I'm not going to do this anymore. I move that we support the application for the Workplace Readiness Program for the Granby Girls in Engineering.
Second.
Second, okay. It's been moved improperly, so I can't do Ms. Jackson.
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Rowley, aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
I'm out.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye. Okay. Moving along, gifted education review, the status update. Dr. Boone?
Thank you. The board is aware that we've undertaken a review of our gifted education programs supported by the College of William &amp; Mary. So this afternoon, Dr. Cataldo and Ms. Stead, the gifted coordinator, supported by Ms. Chavis and Dr. Bailey, will present a status update of where we are as it relates to that particular study.
Good afternoon, Dr. Gabriel, board members. What we'd like to share with you this afternoon, as you know, the actual update to the gifted plan occurs in 2020, 21, is when we bring that to you for final approval. However, the information that would be shared with you this afternoon by Dr. Cataldo and Ms. Stead would be components of that plan as a result of the evaluation that will currently take place, is currently taking place and getting feedback on our gifted program as a whole. So this afternoon, Dr. Cataldo will share where we are with that process, how we got to this point to do the evaluation, and then how the information will be used in the future.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Members of the board, audience. I'm really excited to be here today to talk about some of the updates and where we are with the evaluation of the Gifted Services Program. We have a lot of great updates that I'll be talking about today. First, I want to just give a little bit of background information. 2017-18, we've had, there were numerous discussions within GAC, within, I think, the board as well, talking about where we were with gifted services. 2021, as Ms. Chavis mentioned, is going to be the actual date for the five-year update. So it's a great time to be doing an update, to be looking at what we're doing within a division, to making sure that we are providing services to all of our students and working within the parameters of Virginia Department of Education. So what we've done, we've partnered with William &amp; Mary. Now, we've had a long partnership with William &amp; Mary. We have camp launch in the summertime, which is for, it's for high ability, low income students. It's a free program for those students, and they actually spend two weeks up at William &amp; Mary. So it's an amazing program. We've also done a Grow Your Own program through William &amp; Mary where we are growing our GRTs, so our regular education teachers are going there in summertime, getting credits, getting information, and then coming back and being our GRTs that work within the division. So it's been a longstanding partnership with William &amp; Mary. Now, one thing with William &amp; Mary is they're internationally known for their excellence in research, in curriculum development. They have very strong programs in gifted education, as well as our ELL services. Many of our teachers go there as well to provide and to get additional professional development. So we're really happy about being able to do that with them. So that's kind of where we are. That's a little bit of the background of why we chose and worked with William &amp; Mary. Now, if we look at the actual purpose, so this year, the Center for Gifted Education at William &amp; Mary is going to be partnering with us directly. We've already had multiple meetings with them, some in person, some via Skype or Zoom technology. And what they're going to do is they're going to be conducting a needs assessment, so kind of determining where we are, determining perceptions of strength, weaknesses within our program, areas needing further research and services. So they're going to be working with us on that. Now, it's very similar to our literacy plan and our literacy document that we did two years ago. Again, we had someone come out, look to see what our needs are within the division, and develop a real strong plan that had all stakeholder input. So we're doing that similar process. This evaluation is going to be conducted by the team of Dr. Jennifer Cross and Dr. Tracy Cross, currently from, again, the Center for Gifted Education at William &amp; Mary. And then a report, a final report of all the information that we're collecting at this time, and recommendations will come by December 2019. So you'll get the final update. This is just the initial update. Probably be one along the way, and then one in December for you. So if we look at the scope of work that's being done, currently, they are working, they're going to collect documents for NPS program services. They're constructing a detailed description of the services that we actually do provide. So they're going through our local plan. They're going through and developing an understanding of gifted offerings at all the school levels, and then also identifying specific stakeholder groups. Then, they're going to be interviewing representatives of each stakeholder group by creating the interview protocol, and then also focusing areas will be like satisfaction, which is through the identification process, services that we provide, resources that are available, teacher preparedness, and all general support for services and professional development. So that's currently what they're working on. Then they're going to analyze the interviews, create surveys for the various stakeholders. They'll be done through online or paper pencil, and then be distributing the surveys. So that's kind of the scope of the work. Now, where we are right now, we'll talk about that in our next slide, our current status. But so initially, there is going to be a Phase One and a Phase Two. Phase One is sending out survey data, and I'll indicate who all the stakeholders are that were doing that. So we've sent out surveys this past week, last week as well, surveys that are going to go out to the initial Phase One group. The initial Phase One group does not include our general education teachers. We felt that with some mandatory surveys that have already gone out from VDOE, that it was kind of, we didn't want to overburden our teachers at this time. They're getting ready for SOLs. And we also thought that with that large number, that we could more efficiently work with those surveys at the beginning of next school year. So that's going to be Phase Two. It'll start in, right around the beginning of school year, September, October. So Phase One, we're moving very well through that. They have already interviewed and spoken with, I know, the GAC team. They were at several of the meetings. And then they've also met and spoken with senior coordinators up here at Central Office. So right now, we're at the distribution part of the process, and then once they distribute the second phase in the fall, they will analyze the data, combine survey data information, and then create that report and presentation, which again will be before December 2019. So our current status we've done so far, so we've completed focus group interviews, and right now, we are in the distribution phase. Principals, assistant principals receive their surveys. Gifted resource teachers, gifted parents are working on that final part. I think we'll have that very soon. Curriculum instruction staff have already received their surveys, as well as school counselors. So that will give us really an overview of where we need to go next from that particular part. Now, if you look up on the, at your slides or up on the board there, you'll see that what really, you know, we've talked a lot about this within GAC, is kind of bringing gifted back into the academic rigor services. So by bringing gifted back in here, we kind of worked with GAC, we worked with the GRTs. We've had several meetings on what would be a good name, because sometimes there's a confusion with parents and people looking at our division and looking and saying, okay, where's gifted services found? Because they see the Office of Academic Rigor, and they don't notice or know that gifted is part of that. So we kind of brought gifted back into the department, and we thought this really coincided, fit very well with our current theory of action and our related Gears redesign. So we have the new name of Gears, which is Gifted Education and Academic Rigor Services. So we still maintain the old name, so then people had continuity, and the people that knew it already were able to know exactly what we're doing. But then also, we added gifted education into that as well. Now, remember, that department does handle gifted and non-gifted. You know, AP is not gifted, so they do handle that. So it really works very well. It's a great name. Came up with a great logo with that, and again, it works very closely with our redesign. So that's pretty much the update right now, and some of the exciting changes we've had within gifted community and in discussions about gifted services that we provide. So we're looking forward to providing, again, another update as we collect more information, and then giving you that final meeting in December.
Questions? Okay. Martin, Ms. Campson?
Can you share what you've learned from the focus groups so far?
The focus group, the information is not, I have not seen that information directly. I'm not sure if Ms. Stead has seen any of that information.
Yeah, it's actually been between William &amp; Mary, and I purposely stepped out. I take that back. So GAC, I was in the circle, so I participated in some of the discussions, so I can kind of give you some overviews of what was discussed there. But when it came to a meeting with the GRTs, or the teachers, or the principals, they would meet with them one-on-one, either over the phone, or they would come visit them in the classroom.
Yeah, we tried to stay out of a lot of those, because we wanted real honest answers and real honest feedback, so.
You haven't received anything yet.
Yeah, so we were not part of any of those, and they're currently working through that process right now. So they're in the very early stages of that.
Campson?
This is all really interesting. I love your logo.
It's so cute and has a lot of color, so that appeals to people that are very visual like
me.
It's on the webpage now, too, so it looks good.
Remember Karen, I was talking about color.
Yes, absolutely.
I want all the charts in color. So when all this is finished, and you get all this feedback, and we get our report in December, will then the next step be to bring some observation in to see if what we're hearing is what's actually happening?
I think that'll be done along the way.
Oh, they'll be doing some of, oh, I didn't get that from the presentation.
Yeah, that's generally part of the process, is you go in and, what we do is we try to collect survey data, and then try to go in the classroom and see if what we're seeing matches what they've been saying.
Right, because people can say or write anything, but are they actually doing?
Correct.
So you do have, oh, thank you. That's very important.
And when Dr. Cataldo mentioned the perception that some may have, to actually go in and see it helps to mitigate or erase any perception, and it's actually what has been observed happening.
Thank you.
Jordan?
To the extent that national, state, and local data shows that certain groups and populations are underrepresented or underidentified, how do we reach out, or are we reaching out to those parents, African-American parents, low-income parents, others that fall into those categories? Parents who felt that their child is gifted, but maybe didn't know the process? How do we capture their feedback and thought and experiences in this process, or do we? Or should we?
We actually just, I think it just came on NPS and Channel 47. Ms. Stead and I were talking and really discussing that same exact thing, where we were talking about making sure that we're reaching all students and all families, and how we do that. And we do have a universal screener that we do in second grade for all students. So some students may, you know, a teacher may not think they're gifted, but they may have gifted talents, and so this is one way we capture all students. But I think getting out into the community and working with William &amp; Mary to ensure that they do have our parent stakeholders, which is a huge group, getting their input as well, not only the students that are currently gifted, but students that are not, have not gone through the process, talking with those parents and getting their input as well.
Just one follow-up, if I may. So I know in our gifted policy and some reports we've looked at in the past, we could see by school various gifted clusters. And so if it's appropriate, it would seem to be the one thing we may want to consider, where we see that there are schools that are, I mean, sometimes we see data that are very few identified, even though statistically, one would think that there would be some students there, that maybe we could do some special effort to try to gather with teachers and principals and parents and students there, if students are involved in this, to try to see what is it that we need to hear from those locations, so that if we do have some inequities or some gaps, we don't carry them over into our new work.
I mean, you can go after her.
Oh, no, I was just saying that you wanted to speak.
Oh, oh, okay. So I appreciate, one of the questions I had, I didn't get from the presentation, was about the general education teachers, because we know that real gifted is to be integrated within the classroom all the time. So doing it in the fall, and also in consideration of our schools where we do have underrepresented teachers, I mean, sorry, underrepresented students, and may not, and schools that may not have a dedicated gifted resource teacher. I know they're, you know, receiving services, but I mean, you know, with that dedication.
Right.
Are we also assessing teachers' self-efficacy in terms of identifying students as part of this process? Or is that some, I know some of that is also collected in our climate survey, but I wonder if there's some way to integrate, you know, some of those items, to kind of see if what may be contributing to the underrepresentation as part of this? I know I'm probably getting technical.
Well, I think that could be, because we've not, we're in the process of working with them to get ready to gear up the survey for the jointed teachers. If it's not a part of the survey currently, there may be a way to integrate some questioning to get to that, and that will also then, with Mr. Jordan's concern, working also with GRTs to better understand, to make sure that we're addressing the needs of all kids. And so there may be an opportunity to work with William &amp; Mary to include questioning if it's not already there for our general education teachers as part of the survey process.
Because once we finish Phase One, which will be, that information we'll have this summer, we'll be able to go through some of that and then determine what wasn't asked, or what focus do we need to really ensure, then we do Phase Two, working with the teachers and the schools, that we ensure that we have those questions answered.
I was going to add that they are asking those types of questions within the surveys.
They are, okay. Okay.
To kind of glean that.
I'll follow up. And how are perhaps cultural differences in terms of perception around gifted being addressed? I mean, you may not have the answer to that, but I, you know, I think in the future, I think that's a good, because one of the things I've consistently heard as a member of the GAC, and then, you know, now as, just listening in on to the meetings, is that, you know, different groups of parents have different perceptions about what it means to be gifted, and it's not always positive. And so how do we communicate with different groups, different target audiences, around getting the information that we're looking for?
I'm going to let you ponder on that note, and then go to Ms. Martin.
I was going to have a response to that.
Okay, Dr. Boone.
Well, and I would say, as part of the conclusion of the study, we have a responsibility to really be, to push out the information and the data in a broad-based fashion. So families who may not have been part of the process, for whatever reasons, or families that have the interest and want to learn more about it, we can make it readily available to them, and include them in some discussions to also help them, you know, what are the characteristics of perhaps gifted learners or higher-achieving learners beyond those of grades? Because too often, people equate the grades as representing either giftedness or high learning skills. And so I think, once we get all of the results and the recommendations, there are ways in which we can draw other folks into the conversation, general ed teachers, as well as family members around, understanding the characteristics of giftedness.
Martin?
And I think that probably ties into what my question was on, so I'm hearing that there's underrepresented students in the gifted program. How do we know there are underrepresented students in the gifted program? What are we doing, like, is that just an assumption we're making because we're not seeing the demographics that we want to see, or like, what, how do we know that?
It is driven by the demographics. Obviously, when you look at a district, there are some national standards in terms of what we see in terms of representation in gifted and representation in special education. And we generally see an overrepresentation of students of color and males in special education, and an underrepresentation of students of color, and sometimes male, in giftedness, as well as socioeconomic status. They flow in both places. And so there was a point in Norfolk where we were actually screening, I think first grade is where we did the COGAT, and we had a very conscious and concerted effort to go beyond just that screening tool as the identification tool. So sometimes we had students who were on the bubble, or showed different characteristics in the classroom than what they showed on the COGAT, on that screening tool. And parents could recommend, teachers could recommend, a gifted resource teacher could look at a student's profile, and then we would go to the next level of evaluation, which may be a portfolio assessment, where you bring in student work and other things to look at it. And so that's part of what we're hoping to glean from this review, as to what are the best practices that we currently have in place, and perhaps what are some practices that have gone by the wayside over time that we need to restore to be able to address the underrepresentation.
One of the things, looking at from a schoolhouse point of view, the school that I started at as an administrator, we had five children identified. When I came there, because, you know, when you're the AP, you're in charge of everything, and that was also gifted, getting them on and off the bus at that time, because they were going to Stewart. And what we found is, as time went by, is that we don't do any intervention or have a concern until we've done the testing. And so what, and not just, a number of schools did, you know, principals talk, was they had their gifted teacher come into, and it was first grades then, into the classes throughout the year, and provide the opportunities for our low-income, mostly it was low-income kids that were struggling, to be exposed to the kind of activities that middle-class children have on a daily basis as they grow up. And a lot of the assessment was done based on the kinds of things that your children are probably doing, but a lot of our low socioeconomic children are not exposed to, because they don't always demonstrate their giftedness. It's like it's hidden under poverty. And so what you have to do is give them an opportunity to participate in the kind of activities they missed as a preschooler. And so gifted teachers, as part of their ongoing, and really was when we had almost full-time, I don't think we ever had a full-time, but almost full-time, was when they were there more, that they had time to be able to go into the first-grade classes once a month, and provide those activities, so that by the time the assessment came, the children, the low socioeconomic children, at least had some exposure and some practice with the kinds of things they were looking for, so that we front-loaded it. And within, you know, a few years, I mean, our numbers tripled, and I mean, we were up to forty-something, I think, the same population, demographics didn't change. It was just that their abilities were masked by poverty. And I think that's a way to address it.
And if I may, in follow-up to what Ms. Campson is saying, that is exactly that model that was developed when we moved away from what had been a center-based gifted model. It was called field lighthouse. And so one of the things we knew about is giftedness is not a one-day-a-week event. That giftedness represents how a student learns, and how they handle information and life. And so part of that going away from the center-based model, where students would get access to giftedness one day a week, was about how do you bring gifted services into the classrooms? And there was also very strong professional development for general ed teachers around supporting and differentiating for students who would have potential gifts.
I may just one additional thing. One of the joys of having the gifted resource teachers pushing into the classroom is that while they're working with gifted children, they're also able to look at other children who may have the capacity or potential, and work with them a little bit to get them to a point where they feel comfortable when it's time to test again. It may not be that second grade, it could be later on, but there's an opportunity to continue to work with children in the classroom, as opposed to just pull out to identify other children who have that potential to be identified.
Yeah, I'm always thinking, push in.
Great, well, thanks, Dr. Boone, Dr. Cataldo, Dr. Chavis and team for the update. Definitely are very interested on the follow-up report. Ms. Jackson, if you could put a placeholder on December for a presentation update to the board, that way we have it in our notes. That would be fantastic. And just let us know when you're ready to bring back the middle presentation between now and December. Okay. Thank you very much. So the next item that we had on our agenda was to have a little bit of discussion on the CAC letter, but being that we are going to be incorporating a closed session, board members, if I could just ask you to just read the letter on your own, and then we will come back and address it at a later meeting date. So we're going to go right ahead and move into our educational planning and facilities update. And, Dr. Boone, if it's okay, I'll just, if there isn't a St. Paul's Transformation update along with it, if we could just combine all of that together.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Just a couple of statements on St. Paul's.
Perfect. Okay. So we'll go ahead and start with our educational planning update. Dr. Boone?
Thank you. As we continue along the process of the educational planning, we were hoping that Tracy Richter would be able to join us via teleconference today, but his travel wouldn't allow him to, didn't coincide with the time. He is hoping to be before the board in June, hopefully. But, so this afternoon, where we, the presentation that we're doing today deals with the school start planning update, where the board gave the nod to Tracy Richter being the project manager for this work. So I'll ask Dr. Bailey, Mr. Fuddy, if they will share this afternoon's update.
Thank you, Dr. Boone, and members of the board. This is just really a quick snapshot of where we are. You can see that we will be establishing an internal working committee around the middle of May, where Tracy will communicate with those individuals that are invited from various department areas, and we have various topics that will be discussed at that point. We'll also be looking at our individual schedules, so that it can be a monthly meeting established all the way to November. And I think that the plan at that point would be to provide you an update. And so you can see the topics, that's not just the list in its entirety. There'll be other things that will come up, but this is just to give you a snapshot. Certainly, one of the bigger things that we will be talking about is the transition and stagger times for the schools. That's it.
Perfect. Whoa. Ms. Jackson, can you put on our November calendar for an update?
Actually, yeah, it'll be update, final recommendation.
Right, yes, okay.
And there may also be an August or September something.
Sure.
But we aren't sure yet. Depends on the pace of the work.
Okay.
Are we taking questions on this?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So the athletic field lighting, so will a more holistic conversation around athletics take place as well?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
The whole piece of, and why November is the target date because of budget schedule.
Right, okay.
And so any budget implications, knowing this schedule changes, we will be able to talk, as we said, about before and after. All of that will be part of what goes on. Now, when you ask, the athletic field lighting was related to one of the challenges with changing the school start time, but when you ask for a comprehensive look, I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, so I'm asking
Well, so I'm asking, I, I, I'm asking about that because, you know, one of the concerns and challenges that is often stated for changing start times is athletics, obviously, and everything being pushed back. And so one of the things when we consider the field lighting is, number one, are, you know, I know for several sports, they don't necessarily practice on their school field, for instance. And they don't necessarily practice right after school as it is currently. And, you know, we have partnerships with Powhatan Field, for instance, where, you know, uh, kids practice there and they play games there. And, you know, of course, so if that's, like, what are we currently doing? What is the ideal model that we're trying to achieve and how does lighting impact that? Because if we do a lot of things off-site, for instance, off of the school site, is lighting as big of a budget consideration as we may think it is? You know, if, if we don't understand exactly how kids are, um, participating in athletic programs.
Thank you for that clarification, yes, that, that's all of that conversation. What are the sports and what are the locations that, that would need it? We have the first right of scheduling as it relates to Powhatan Stadium. So as a result of that, that, that's not a, a concern. You know, in terms of the MOU with Powhatan Stadium with the city and Old Dominion, of course, is we have the first right of scheduling events. And then secondary to that would be the city and Old Dominion. A lot of the lighting issues deal with the, the latter part of football. And the early part of spring baseball and softball. Those were some of the, the key considerations. We already, golf, um, some of those areas are already off-site. And so lighting, soccer, we do some soccer on site at Powhatan and some of the fields. So yes, but all of that will be the consideration is what's the sports, what's the location? And what are those needs, so exactly. The other thing would be practice fields, while a couple of schools practice, have practice fields on their site, they don't have playing fields. And so that's going to be part of that discussion also.
Right, and the condition of, so then that's where I kind of saw the holistic is that also the condition of some of the fields may not be playable. And how does that factor in? I don't know if that's true.
No, that I was going to say, that, that's not the case. The, the condition of the fields are very strong, we've done improvements over long. Our biggest condition, field with the greatest condition in terms of football was Powhatan Stadium.
Okay.
There are some, some desires and some other things around baseball and softball, but the conditions of the fields themselves are, are well maintained.
So what I'm hearing is that you guys are taking a very, um, uh, strong look at making sure that the, the field lighting is being addressed. And if there are budget implications, that we will get them by November, so that way if there's, uh, we, we know that there's going to be budget implications. So that way, if the lighting is to be, um, uh, placed, that we can do it on a timeframe, so that way it gets done, uh, before the start time is, uh, before it begins for the next school year.
That's our goal. And again, that's where the board was clear in, in, in approving Tracy Richter to facilitate the project management on this piece. To make sure, because of his expertise and his experience, we could get it all pulled in.
Okay. Ms. Campson?
When we talk about the budget implications of the field lighting, and we already have a budget for this coming year that does not have field lighting in it. So when we start talking about the budget implications, are we talking about the budget for, uh, twenty twenty-one, when we're already doing late start time?
That's correct. The budget, but see, remember that budget, uh, depending upon the, the information that comes, we may be able to initiate. Some of the work in the nineteen twenty year, the design, the implementation, that's why we're presenting it at that point. For the final implementation to begin July one. And so that's, that's the way that, that we scale and pace these projects. The first time we would need lighting is the latter part of November after, mid to latter part of November after, um, uh, time changes. And so looking at somewhere a nine to twelve week window to have lighting in place, in, in some instances, that gives us enough time from July one. Until that point of mid-November to make that happen. So we have looked at it from when do we have to have lighting in place? And backwards mapping to, to when funding could be included, included, available. Again, we will be able to look at some funding needs and, and where we are with our burn rate or our spend rate. And maybe able to accelerate something in a couple of places if that's the case. But that's the goal for that November piece, we are planning for the twenty twenty-one school year. You know, the goal of having a project management in this is that we aren't piecemealing the work. And such that something gets left off and something doesn't get planned for in, in the same frame. So project management brings it from A to Z in that way, so that nothing gets left off or, or omitted.
So we can start putting in lights July one and have all five high school fields lit by November?
Again, to Ms. Bassin's question is where will we actually need lights? Some, for example, there are some lights at a couple of places already. So not everyone needs lights. The, the playing fields for Granby and Moore, of course, is Powhatan Stadium, and they have lights. I believe Lake Taylor High School has field lights.
But do they practice there?
Lake Taylor High School does, no, but that's what I'm saying. So the, the extensive, the type of lighting that's needed for a practice field may not parallel the lighting that's needed for a playing field. And so the time that it takes to bring lighting on to a practice field is, could be a very shorter time. Because again, you, the, the lights that you would need for a playing field includes the stands and all of that. A practice field doesn't require that much lumen, that many lumen, in terms of accessing it. So that's all part of this work in this study. As you all received from Mr. Sutton Miller, some, um, background information that's already available. And so we aren't starting with zero because of that, the, the work, the, uh, front end work that's already been done. As most of these pieces are not starting with zero, because we know where we are and, and conversations and other things have already been initiated. But Tracy Richter is going to keep it in a management, keep it managed in a way that we don't overlook key areas that have to be addressed.
Thank you. Other questions?
You know, I was thinking about this, when you talked about the communication plan and the marketing, one of the ideas that popped out of our last discussion about the advisory committee was to put a video out. Because that will probably reach a lot more, um, individuals and parents versus, um, meetings. And so that's something I'll for you all to consider, Dr. Boone and with Tracy, if it's worthwhile to, I, I think it would be, to, to do a video, um, of this. And then that way it can be shared on social media and other avenues to get the word out.
When would we want that ready? Do we have like a timeline for that?
Tracy can, can come, I mean.
We'll pass that on to him. So you were talking about around decision points, or once the, the final nod has been given to the window, the, you know, the school stagger time or at the end? We, we can do it any number of ways.
I'm trying to figure out the most efficient way to get the word out to parents and families that start times are being changed. And if you are seeking their input, what is it that you want to gain from them? And so that's.
Got it.
Where I'm going with it.
And put it on the, on the, our website, on the school district's website, maybe.
Communications.
And plus social media.
Yeah.
Not everyone does social media.
Don't think when I say that.
That's what, that's just one part of the marketing plan.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. So, okay, well, this is, this is great, thank you very much. We will definitely have the placeholder for November and then any other updates that need to come before, we'll just bring it up in agenda planning and we'll go from there. Thank you, Dr. Boone. Okay, moving right along, uh, Mr. Clanton, Mr. Jordan, uh, facilities committee.
We didn't, we didn't know we were presenting. I didn't, we never got the feedback that we were, that we were presenting. I didn't, we didn't get together to prepare anything other than what we had talked about before.
Okay, um, well, if, just kind of give us an update then, as to, I, I know you guys have had some, some good facility meetings.
Maybe if, uh, is it, okay, if Ms. Ingram joins us then at the table? About to move.
Absolutely, I mean, I'm at the table here too.
I know, I know, I didn't say that, because.
It's, I mean, this is a work session, guys, so we're just go with the flow, it's fine.
Yeah, so, uh, we actually just, uh, started, uh, a few months back. You know, the benefit of, uh, Mr. Clanton having some experience on the inside, but then also being new in the board position. Me being new to the facilities committee. And with a lot of this work that we've just talked about with the ed planning. We kind of said, can we take a step back and just kind of revisit, why do we exist? What's our purpose? How do we tie into the, you know, strategic initiatives of the board, the school board accountability plan and so forth? One of the things that did occur, um, we were trying to at least try to break down some, I won't say initial silos, maybe I should say it in a better way. We wanted to strengthen our collaboration. So we, uh, talked about bringing, um, um, IT and, uh, ed planning with, uh, Mr. Fuddy and Mr. Samora to the table, Samora to the table. To, um, make sure that we were, as we talked about, facilities and infrastructure and the backlog and CIP and all the things that we've talked about for some time. That we could come forward and make some recommendations to the board around, uh, you know, what we should do and how we should go forward. And then get some feedback from the board on whether or not we were going in a good direction with the idea of being able to come forward in, in the July summer timeframe. With thoughts and recommendations for the board to, uh, consider as, uh, you know, as, as a retreat function. One, I'm sorry, I did cut that off. Didn't expect to be talking, sorry about that. So, um, uh, so we really, we just started off by going to the whiteboard and, and just kind of talking through as a group, uh, those very questions. What are we trying to accomplish? What do you want to achieve? What, kind of doing a mini SWOT analysis of what was out there. We knew we had the work that had been undergone by, is it, uh, KBA, is that right?
HBA.
HBA. And so, you know, at the time that that work was done, uh, you know, Mr. Johnson wasn't in his position, there'd been some changes. So we wanted to kind of talk through, well, where do we stand with those things? And then frankly, as I, you know, as Mr. Clanton and I first started getting involved with the committee. At least I can say from my perspective, it was a little interesting, because as you know, as someone who was formerly on the committee. The MPS staff and the city staff were having conversations and we were in the room, but they seemed to be much more at an operational level. And really didn't belong at the board level. So what we did was recommended that they go ahead and have their operational meeting. And then we would come after and begin to have these conversations around the, uh, around the big picture. But we did, uh, I think I shared with you all the minutes from the last meeting. We did get an opportunity to have conversations with, uh, HBA and give the, uh, staff an opportunity to review that, um, have some preliminary conversations.
And when you say HBA, so just to make sure we're all, we are talking about the facility condition index?
Facility's condition.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that's, that's what you're referencing.
The other thing is, you know, we've had these, um, preliminary reports from, uh, the council of great city schools. So we're trying to factor in, you know, how do we go about a process of, you know, board review and committee review? And maybe there's some recommendations as a part of some suggestions that they had that would also inform, uh, our, our committee purpose. So the intent was, was to be able to come and do an update now, uh, get feedback from the board, just in terms of us even having a conversation around, you know, why do we exist? Is that okay? And then, um, you know, with some nod or any feedback from the board, uh, go down to the next level. And hopefully by June, be able to come back with a more formal presentation. So that the board would anticipate the framework that we may come forward with in the, uh, in the summer. But also, we would have the confidence that the board was comfortable with the direction that we were going in, that we were capturing any concerns or issues or thoughts. That the board had as we considered that framework. So I don't know if Mr. Clanton or Ms. Ingram wanted to add anything to, to that.
I mean, I holistically agree with what Mr. Jordan's already stated in respect, that, you know, I think that you made the comment, Ms. Bassin, at some point about all these committees. At one point in reevaluating their purposes. And so I think, um, that what we were able to do, working with staff and board, is to really look at how we reshape, um, the workings of the facilities committee. So it really can be a board-driven committee that's aligned with our goals and responsibilities and that we can bring those recommendations back to the board. Especially when we start talking about budget and talking about other.
We talked about trying to be out front, so that the school board is driving the discussions with council.
Exactly.
And not just trying to figure out how do we operate within this framework? We know we've got this big.
Proactive.
Yep.
We know we've got this big maintenance issue, we know we've got facilities issues, we hear that, the report speaks to itself. So how do we take all that information and strategically, or in Dr. Boone's word, with some, uh, systems thinking? Go forward to begin to, uh, make some major dents over time and not just keep, year after year after year, just saying we have a big problem and.
Right.
Never really seeing to be able to move forward with addressing it.
So how we come back with those recommendations to address those problems.
So I think, um, it would be, um, very feasible to give a large chunk of time at our July, um, retreat, um, for that report. And so let's go ahead and plan on that, and that's going to be, you know, done towards the beginning part of July. So we can, um, allocate time, you tell me how much time you need. I'm thinking two or three hours, um, if that's necessary, but, you know, you just tell me, you tell me how much time you need for that. For, but it's not just, here's, here's the situation, it's, 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 when I was going back through some of my construction stuff. We have a capital improvement book that's set to expire twenty twenty. And so, you know, how, how relevant is that book based on the facilities condition index and all of that? So, you know, the way that we do our meetings, it's better for us to allocate the time and then dial back if we need to.
Well, if I may, I mean, that's actually part of that strategic review.
Yeah.
Because, you know, one of the questions we have to, uh, determine is, you know, from the concept of the board establishing some vision and priorities. And then the administration going through and implement, you know, part of what we have to figure out is at the board level to what, how deep do we go? And, you know, and, and so that's part of the conversation that we're trying to figure out and want to.
Yeah.
Vouch back, get feedback from the board.
Let me just say one thing and then we'll go to questions.
Now, if Ms. Ingram wants to add anything before we go to questions.
Well, in addition to that, the facilities condition index was done last year or so. And we have been updating, doing facility projects. So one of the things that we'll be doing and reporting out is what have we done since the facility condition index? And in addition to that, we really had not pulled in technology and infrastructure. So Mr. Samora is going to be working on what have we done from the infrastructure technology piece? So we can do the holistic approach and not just the building itself.
And is that something for July?
Yes, that's all part of the same committee.
That's all part of that.
That's part of the revising, visioning of that committee is to pull in technology. And then also to feed in from the educational planning piece, so it'll be all together, we wouldn't be in isolation.
What I remember, um, from the construction committee was, it was, it was important being that the schools were in the process of being built to have that, uh, that board member as a go-between to give updates to the board. You know, here's where we are with Largemont, here's where we are with Ocean View, signage, art, things, things that would need board input, um, or a board vote in order for it to happen. But one of the other things that, um, happened was, uh, Mr. Fuddy started coming to the meeting so that we could incorporate both program analysis and facility together. Because if we were making a decision about a building and, let's say it was going to impact a program or student attendance, we wanted to make sure that, that, that input was being brought into it, so.
And I think part of our conversation is, how do we be more forward-thinking and strategic in that so that we don't find ourselves being event-driven?
Right, exactly.
But that we're being strategically driven.
Right, so, uh, go to questions, Ms. Campson?
But just to remind the board that the new accountability plan that begins implementation July one has a December nineteenth due date for a, um, a new capital improvement plan to be presented to the board at that time. That, that looks five years ahead.
Yeah, we included it in our, in our notes.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We put it down.
Any other questions?
So, last, I know we're going to do a presentation, one of the things we had talked about was, um, you know, maybe putting a memo together. So, since we kind of did this ad hoc, maybe we can come back and maybe just put a one pager together and send it out to the board for any, any feedback so that we don't find ourselves, again, we just don't want to go down the path and be too far down a hole and the board says, no, we'd like for you to consider these things. So, if we can either put some bullets together or one pager and send it out and get some feedback, then at least we'll have that confidence that we're going in the right direction, um, so that we are officially using everybody's time.
Sure, um, I'm going to put one concept out there and it's for, for, for you all to consider, whether you want to consider it through the committee or if Dr. Boone wants to consider it with staff, or maybe it's something that's already happening. But, um, uh, when someone, uh, whether it be an administrator, a staff member, a parent, sends an email or a phone call or a message to say, hey, we have X problem at X school, is there a process in place to know, either through a dashboard or through some type of tracking mechanism, that the email has been received, that there is a response, that there is somebody that is addressing it, what the timeline is for addressing it, and then what the follow-up is? I, I, I know from just personally, my work, um, in the emergency room, when we send a lab out, the lab is sent, it says it's received and processed, resulted, and if there's a big red flag, it means pick up the phone and call because you need to know about this sooner rather than later. So, so that we can get some type of a feedback loop and improve our communications with individuals who are concerned, and I don't think that they want to necessarily, they, they know, they know that their answer may not be exactly what they want, but they just want to know that there is someone listening and if there is a response, what is that response?
So, I'll.
We could ask Mr. Johnson, he has the school do work order system, especially if, if anyone is, has, uh, issues at the buildings that they want to log a, a work order, um, process.
Okay.
He can go through that process and anytime, once they go in and log it, they can also go into it and check on the status of it.
That's internal.
That's the internal, I guess.
Okay.
And I was going to say, I think the, uh, the council report spoke a little bit about, you know, the, the customer service and the internal piece of it. I think one of the things that we would have to consider bringing back to the board as part of that summer process is, I mean, what, what is the board's expectation from whom and at what level? Because Dr. gave what I, as I interpreted your idea, it was more of, um, uh, external, uh, persons that may be asking about something.
It could be both.
Versus the internal system, I think. Part of the SWOT analysis that we're going through is really just trying to get a good feel for, um, the, the level of the work, the current capacity to execute it, the budget piece, and try to deal with it at that level, uh, before we even would get to, uh, some of those direct customer service things that may or may not fall within our initial, uh, framework from a committee perspective. I, I just don't, don't know.
Something to consider.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that it's, um, I understand we're talking about the relation to the facilities, but just as a customer service as a whole, I know that we have, um, and I correct me, I think what we have, like Telus, um, at MPS or something like that. So, I'm not quite sure exactly how that works, but I think that, you know, we've heard it throughout the year and we've, you know, I know that I'm not the only one probably heard it from constituents on how we're being responsive to concerns, follow-up. Um, and I think that, you know, just hearing a, a system like that know, lets us know as a board member, um, you know, that things are being handled, and even for the external community, that they know that, you know, it's not just going into this oblivion. I've sent a message out and I don't get a response, but that we are setting some expectations around some type of, um, responsive timing and that we have some system. So, I mean, I don't get into the, to the weeds of how that gets done, but I just think that it's, you know, just from what I'm hearing, that that might be a good, um, opportunity. And I don't know what we already have in place, until Dr. Boone, you could correct me on that, or we have a system like that. But just something that we could address those concerns when they come up.
Just briefly, Telus is usually, anything that comes of that is usually, um, forwarded to either myself, depending upon the nature of its policy-driven, or if it's something for a specific school or department. And then we follow up to see, y-you know, what's the response? Not everything, just as in social media, not everything that comes through Telus, we, uh, respond to. Because it's, some of it is just way in, in a different place.
Yep.
Emails that come directly to me, as a matter of fact, I sent the board an email this afternoon showing an example of something we had followed up on.
Okay.
Uh, relative to a question about Willow.
Okay.
And so, Mr. Johnson, it's a shared space with the city and he's able to document what those efforts have been, and we followed up with the individual who had asked the question. But I forwarded to the full board this afternoon.
I know one of the things we had talked about wanting to really just update ourselves and update the, the board as a whole, you know, just what that current relationship is between the school system and the city and who's responsible for what, because that always comes up.
That is.
All the time, so.
Something that comes up.
But I would just say, at, at this point, where we were philosophically, we weren't looking to get down to that level that quick. But we get, well, we can factor it into our next discussion.
I, I appreciate the off-the-cuff, uh, description and we'll look forward to the memo and, um, whatever you all need for the July retreat, just let us know, we'll be ready.
The only other thing I would like to do is just let you know who's on that committee. Uh, Mr. Footy, of course, is on it, Danny Johnson, Jesse Zamora and Carol Robinson from Purchasing, and myself from Administration, and then with Mr. Jordan and Mr. Clanton, is that, that level of that committee.
We appreciate your work, everyone's work on it, we know it's very important.
I have just two sentence update on St. Paul's.
Go for it.
Just the two sentence update on St. Paul's, we've not heard any information relative to the CNI grant, so I don't know the status of that. And as we shared at the la- I know, we're supposed to know the end of March, so that's my third sentence, I probably don't have to. And, um, the, as, the, the St. Paul's, um, advisory meeting for April was canceled due to spring break and, um, the inability of a number of the, uh, advisory members being unable to attend. But we did share with the board, um, that we were starting some meetings that NRHA was partnering with our schools in the St. Paul's area four. And, um, the first of those meetings has occurred, Ty Water Park's meeting has occurred with the faculty and NRHA, PB Young, uh, Ruffner, and perhaps have been scheduled, are being scheduled, and we will probably bring Bogotey into that loop also, so, those are underway. That's it for St. Paul's.
Great, we're going great on time. Um, okay, the next item up for discussion is the audited fund balance and there will be a vote required for this. Dr. Boone.
Thank you. At the last meeting when we, uh, presented a set of recommendations as it relates to the utilization of the, uh, audited fund balance, the board asked us to come back and provide some additional information, um, for, uh, for certain, uh, questions we'll have. So, I want to, I believe Ms. Ingram and I, we, we talked several times and I think we, um, tried, we tried to answer the questions that, that we felt were asked. Um, as you recall, I did indicate last meeting that this is the first time in about six years that the school board has had to take action on an audited fund balance because prior to this, this current budget that we're in, we had been directed to use, uh, the fund balance to help close the gap with the city's funding and what the overall district operational needs were. And that is what created the, uh, structural imbalance in our budget because we were building the budget with a portion of one-time funds. So, each subsequent year, we had to start with that as a negative balance in our budget as we went forward. So, um, what we have for you today, and Ms. Ingram will walk you through it, is a timeline and a summary, uh, related to the questions about the portion of the recommendation that we pretty much recoup the costs, um, beyond what has been allocated for the furniture fixtures, equipment and technology for the five PPA schools. So, we, we pull back the historical information, I know the question was asked, well, what documents are there? What we have here or what the documents, uh, that actually exist? And as I shared last time, some of this had never been codified in, in writing. It had been conversations, uh, with the prior superintendents and the prior city managers, um, current superintendent, uh, former city manager and current city manager, as well as budget and finance staff. So, I'll ask Ms. Ingram to, to walk us through this.
Good afternoon again. Um, I went back to August of 2013 to go back to, we went back and, and was trying to get documents or look through emails and see what do we have to support some of this information and to give you a historical perspective. So, what we, what some of the documents we were able to get was in August of 2013, the school board resolution to approve the school construction agreement between the city of Norfolk and the school board came from the attorney's office. And basically, that agreement was stating that, um, the school board would design the new school builders and the city would be responsible for funding them contracted and managing the contract. And then in November of 2014, the city council voted to approve a comprehensive agreement with SB Ballard Construction Company to construct, um, four new schools. Um, and that was negotiated between teams, ten-member team from the city of Norfolk and Norfolk Public Schools. Initially, it was just a four school, it did not include Camp Allen. And in July 2015, the city council amended their PPA comprehensive agreement with Ballard and Company to construct a new Camp Allen, that's where the fifth school came into place, and then to remove the funding for furniture fixtures and equipment and information technology from the original construction, um, budget to Norfolk Public Schools. And then they also updated the budget. So, that is when it was determined that the schools will be responsible for purchasing the furniture fixtures and equipment. And in March of 2016, the city transferred the $6.6 million to us for FF and E and it's, um, and it included technology and excluded cameras. And this is a snapshot of what came over from the city, showing us the funding that we got that constituted the $6.5 million.
$6.
$6.6 million, thank you.
So, this is that buy school piece of, so that's how.
So, that was supposedly in the contract and that was came over to us. And then in March of 2016, um, what we soon found out, when we started taking over the FF and E portion and looking at what the needs were for the schools, we found out that the funding that they had allocated was insufficient to take care of, uh, furnishing the schools to meet the educational requirements of everything we need. And plus in addition, like I said earlier, we also were doing the infrastructure wiring, not just the technology equipment. So, it was at that point where we noticed that there would be a gap. So, the conversation went on between the former CFO and the city manager and the deputy city manager at the time that we needed additional funding. And they said that the city will provide it. So, we proceeded to purchase the furniture based on them telling, having that conversations and saying that the city will provide the funding for the schools.
I have a clarifying question, but when we say the technology and the wiring, are we talking about the smart boards, anything that's mounted on a wall or coming through a wall?
Now, we, we did it all, we, we pulled the wiring, yes, the smart boards, the computers, whatever.
System, all of that?
Yes.
That was on us?
PA system.
PA system, I think, was, was in the, I think the PA system was there.
It's just the technology.
It's the technology wiring for the individual classrooms.
Okay.
And instructional spaces in the building.
So, furniture, the technology, and then?
And equipment.
And?
And, the equipment associated with the instructional.
So, what, what would that be an example of?
What?
The equipment.
Um, in your labs.
Oh, like the computers, in the computer labs?
Computer labs or, or any type of equipment for the lab. What we tried to do to, to mitigate some of the costs, what as much as we could transfer from the old building into the new building, we did that, tried to mitigate the costs. But in some instances, you had to buy new equipment. Because of what the layout called for.
Thank you.
So.
Ms. Martin.
But wiring would be anything behind the walls, right? And the city did not pay for that?
When we had to do the technology piece, the wiring that had to be done for that piece, uh, Mr. Zamora was in charge of pulling that wiring and purchasing what was required.
So, there was some wiring, you want to come to the table?
Can you show your mic? I went through this with the city with the library. Anything behind the walls, they funded?
Well, the PPA was supposed to have been in this one pool of money. And so, that's why we're showing there was a point in time that the FF and E got pulled out of that, which. Mrs. Zamora, can you talk about, just briefly, what the wiring, the electrical wiring work we had to do to support technology?
Well, I can't talk about the electrical, but what I can talk about is the network cabling.
Right.
That we're at the, the, um, actually the four schools or the five schools. Um, so, the cabling was actually, I believe that was, I believe that was us. Um, what, what was covered by Baller was the, the security camera systems and, um, and then that was also working with the, with the city. Uh, what we were responsible for was the network, uh, we're talking about the switches, the cabling, the telecommunications, um, even the, um, the PA system as well.
Oh, okay.
And so, some of the, when you talk about the Chromebooks, uh, some of we use, we use some that are from the old school and we brought it over because they were, they were still in good condition. But you have to do the most.
We had to do the network.
If it's behind the walls, the city, sorry, just the city's supposed to pay for that? But, okay.
Well, you're supposed to pay for everything.
This is where we are.
Right.
This, this, this is where we are and this is why we, we're bringing forward this, this additional information.
And so, one of the things that was included in all this was e-ray funding. Uh, we were refunded by 80% uh, for, um, the cable, the cabling and the wireless and the switches.
And you see that reflected in that chart below, the second chart, yes, that chart.
Ms. Camson and then Mr. Clanton.
Well, Dr. Boone, because I know she touched on it last time, that you've had conversations with the city manager about this and they have not gone anywhere, so is it time for maybe the board to have a, or the chair to have a conversation or?
So, I'm, I'm, everybody is aware, I mean, I've even had a conversation with the mayor about the fact that not only did we have insufficient funds for some of the FF and E and technology, you heard me say last week, we have actually borne, um, the electrical cost, electricity cost for building these schools. And I've said that to the prior board, and when we, we're talking millions of dollars, we're not talking about just, you know, the, the place in Suffolk and Habitat for Humanity was building the house. And so, we were generous enough to allow them to tap into our electricity for that building, okay? But, we're talking about running, Ms. Ingram, you want to say in terms of what, for the lighting and everything that we had to run? So, some of these costs ran.
It was like, when Carol went back and pulled the numbers, it was like $761,000 approximately in that what we would consider infrastructure. That should have been part of the construction cost and not part of FF and E.
Only electricity.
Or that, that doesn't include electricity. That was just the other cabling pieces and things that's behind the walls that we, that we were doing that we felt like should have been part of the construction and not part of furniture fixture.
But then we also had the electricity costs related to it. You want to talk about some of, of what, the running electricity from the building to the lights?
Let me just get a finish on this and then I'll be glad to hear that. So, at this point then, you've had your discussions, it would seem like that perhaps the board needs to make another effort, rather than taking the money that we have, that's our money that could be used to, to do maintenance in our schools, that could be used for a lot of things, to restore fine arts supplies, a lot of things that we mentioned last week, that what would be another step that we could take? Since we were, I mean, why should the board bear that burden when the promise in the city was so wonderful? Wonderful to do five schools for us, I mean, I mean, that's a celebration. But they kind of, this is like a little hiccup in that gift, so.
There's always the fine print in the gift. So, uh, city manager Smith and I have found ourselves in that unique place that both of us inherited somewhere we are. And so, the idea of, and even when we've had our joint, uh, staff leadership team meetings, you, you know, this has been an agenda item, so it's not that city manager Smith or anybody, we've avoided. that City Manager Smith, anybody, we've avoided, but we've gotten to the point, I just don't think they have the additional funds to put there. So I've even talked with him about what this audited fund balance would look like, what we were proposing to the board around this. Again, the challenge, there is no challenge to making the ask. I would say it that way. Time-wise, again, you know, we talked about needing to close this out before the end of the fiscal year, by the end of the fiscal year. And so it doesn't cross into the next fiscal year. So that was a piece. And then there was also, prior to City Manager Smith, there was a little bit of, I think of a disagreement between NPS and Legal Services. We were on the same page. And the city's assessment is whether or not we even needed an ordinance to spend these dollars. And so that kind of tied it up for a little while. Mr. Cloud was helpful in developing a document around that. But I don't think that ever happened, you know, in terms of that ordinance. So, that's, yeah, that's kind of a.
All right. Mr. Clayton?
So, the original PPA was for schools.
Yes.
So, looking at the document here, July 2015, like Dr. Boone said, total agreement before she got here, I'm looking at that the original agreement was changed to include now a fifth school, Camp Allen. So there's an original set amount of money. And Ms. Ingram, roughly about how much was that with the agreement to build the four schools?
It was about $101 million.
$101 million?
Approximately.
And if I'm not mistaken, the great opportunity came with the DOD grant for Camp Allen, which I think we had to come up with some matching funds.
Right. DOD did 80% and the city did 20%.
Then the city did 20%. And so looking at July 2015, there's an additional $20 million that had to come from somewhere that wasn't a part of the original agreement. So what I'm trying to understand is, was that $20 million, did that have any offset in anything else that kind of rolled in with these additional dollars that were?
I don't think we know that. We only know what the final agreement looks like and the dollars. So we don't know the source. I don't know if council took action to increase, you know, the overall thing with them putting in 20 more million from bond funding or whatever else. I don't know that.
Well, when I look at this here, I asked the question, particularly on July 2015, with the second item, remove and transfer funding of furniture, fixture and equipment and information technology from the original construction budget to Norfolk Public Schools, was that an action to make the adjustment for the additional $20 million that needed to be added to the original agreement?
Well, we got, if you look at this chart here, if they had not have added Camp Allen, we would not have gotten the 1.362 million. So that's what they added to the overall contract. And then they pulled that for FF and E and gave it to us.
And there was some additional cost for the, I guess for the city's identification of its 20%.
Yes.
But again, the thought process, the actions that went into that, this is how our piece was, we're pulling this out and saying the schools will be, we're going to send the $6.6 to the schools to do this. And this is what the amount is. And so you see.
Was that the 20%, was that what the 20% was?
The funding for the Camp Allen, 20% was supposed to be with local dollars and federal dollars did the 80%.
And so is the 20% the $6 million?
No, 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 no.
Takeout.
$6 million. I'm sorry, Dr..
No.
Why did we take all that? Why do we take the $6 million and transfer it to the school district's responsibility?
Because they agree initially, the contract called for Ballard and Company to do everything, the furniture fixture, do the building and everything.
Right, right. So what was the reason?
So with the, with the decision that we will now be responsible for buying the furniture, fixture and equipment, what they said was they had $6.6 million in the total contract for furniture fixtures and equipment.
But that was at five or four?
That's for five schools. So they pulled that out and that's what they gave us to furnish the schools.
What was the reason that they pulled it out if they weren't using it to make up the difference with the new Camp Allen?
See, I think you're asking us questions that we can't answer from the school district side because this was the city's funding piece. And this was pre Ms. Ingram and myself.
So who can answer the question?
So.
Who can answer it?
And the interesting piece, I would assume those who are remaining on council or, you know, perhaps legal council, that's why, again, we pulled in things where we know what came from the former budget person, financial person at the city and all of that. You know, I can't, we just, we don't know. We provided everything. The school district was not part of, I guess there were conversations where there was an agreement that we would handle this. But in terms of the analysis and the thought process that went into why these were pulled out and what that meant, we could, anything we would provide now would just be assumptions. And I don't think that's wise.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Who in the city could answer the question?
Well, that's what I was saying. Again, you have to remember the city's, the city manager, the person and the financial person left. They're gone. And so what we've been able to pull in here is what we know in terms of actual documents. And we've included the statement, if you look at the note that says former school board, and then the current city and school board staff have had discussions relative to the insufficient funding.
We split it. That would at least bring our costs down.
Yeah. I mean, it's an idea.
I think all ideas are good. You know, I'm being very honest with the board. This is as much as we know and what we could pull back in terms of document research. And I've shared the conversations that I've had that knew it was going to run short, but they would take care of it. There was transition in the city's leadership. And so current city manager and I were faced with how do we address this? And you look at the city's many needs. And so there's still a gap.
So it seems like more investigation to how it happened doesn't have any payoff for us. That it is what it is. But now if we could maybe renegotiate with the city to split the difference or get some support rather than it all being in our lap and on the backs of our children, we'd just.
I guess, when I look at that there's the deficit, and I mean, we've got the dollars in here. I guess my last question on that one is, okay, we got this here, folks started coming in, you know, changing roles and whatever else around, let's just say 2016. When did we kind of like know that we had this deficit?
I mean, we've been monitoring the whole time. And see, what happens is since we had the full $7.8 million or so cash, we knew school by school there was cost overruns. That's when we first had the discussion, the former CFO and the former city manager, okay, you gave us $1.9 million for Capustella. It costs more than $1.9 million for Capustella. If we are short on Capustella, then we probably will be short on the other school. So then we started projecting out with Capustella and Richard Bowlin to see what that overages were. So then we were projecting what the need would be. So ironically, it's coming out pretty much the way we projected in that each school was going over approximately $800,000 to $900,000. Capustella is the largest school, so it went over the greatest. And then we got the $1.2 million from an old CIP project, which then helped cover most of Capustella. But when you start looking at Richard Bowlin, Larchmont, Ocean View, both of the, all three of those have been overrun by approximately $800,000 to $900,000 like we had projected. So we have known it all along. There have been discussions all along of what we were projecting the overage to be. And initially, it was, we're going to take care of it. And then it was, we can't take care of it. So now it's to the point we're in, when we were probably midway between Larchmont and Ocean View, the cash went away and then we stopped building up the deficit.
So, and I'll just end with this one here. So if we didn't have, and I know that we had a difference on agreement as far as with the terminology, not a surplus, because we just didn't feel positions.
If we didn't have an audited fund balance.
Okay. So if we didn't have that one and we didn't have some of these positions that weren't filled, we didn't make some purchases and so forth, we'd be sitting at a deficit in our cash?
Well, cash is going to be the same. It's just in different funds. Right now, the excess.
But your technical question is, yes, over time, we will be carrying on the books a deficit related to the FF and E and technology for PPA.
So we pull these funds from other fund balances in order to make this happen?
Technically not. So Ms. Ingram and I have talked about how best to make this, and so there's not a school finance 2-on-1 class at a different level. So let me try to do it with our, and support me, Ms. Ingram, on this. You think about our own checking accounts, our own budgets. So we get money in, you know, whether it's monthly, a couple pay periods a month, however it is, we get money into it. And generally, we don't spend everything that's in that account. So as we receive deposits into our cash accounts, you know, we get some deposits that come from the state at a certain period of time, some that come from the city at a certain period of time. So we've never gotten to zero. So that's, so as cash has rolled through, we've been able to support this. But at any, so we haven't necessarily pulled for any particular projects. It's just the timing that the cash has come into the account, to the bank account. So we don't go to zero. However, if there was ever a significant financial crisis or something happened, let's say, remember when we were thinking about the government shutdown and when certain things were happening, we wouldn't be getting certain reimbursements. We'd be tapping into those funds at a greater level. And, you know, we talked about how long we would be able to go with child nutrition, how long we'd be able to go with certain grants before we were deep into this. So today, we aren't at zero and therefore a negative couple of million. But if anytime there was a call on those funds that we got to that point, we would be, we would have this deficit of $2 million, which could prevent some other things from happening. Because you remember, some of that cash building that we have is for employees who are 10-month employees and stretch their pay over 12 months. So it's not cash that we can spend. It's cash that's sitting there to be distributed at a later point. You know, most of our teachers and 10-month staff opt for the 12-month pay. And so that's part of that pool. So we didn't actually underfund or defund any particular projects or cut anybody short. It's about the timing of the money that comes into the account has allowed us to be able to do this. But at any point that account got low, there would be this hole.
Okay. So on this chart that's on page one, the second column that says FF and E, that is the money that was prescribed to us as to how much we could spend?
That's the amount that we were told were in Ballard's contract for FF and E.
Okay. And then where is the actuals? Which column is the actuals?
I don't have the actual expenditure by school. If you go to page two, I got the actuals in total.
Okay. That was, is that the 8 million? No?
Cash received, 8 million. Expenses and encumbrances is 10 million.
Okay. So that's, is that, is that the 10 million that's over the $6.65?
No, that's not the over. That's how much we have actually spent. So if I subtract 10 million from the 8 million cash we have, that's what's giving us a $2.8 million deficit. That's the shortfall right there.
So how does the $6.65 million play into those two numbers?
That's part of, so the total cash received is 8 million. That's the 6.6 plus the 1.2.
Oh, because we canceled out that old CIP budget?
That's right. That's right. So that's how we got to the full 8.
Okay.
And then there's E rate. So you see, that's how all of that adds up to that 10 million, to that $8 million. We spent 10 million, which leaves the 2.8 deficit. And we need roughly $250,000 to close out phase two of Camp Allen. So that's what you see there in the green.
Oh, weird. That a deficit on the Camp Allen piece? You need some more money?
Well, no. If we were to reappropriate, like the request is to full $3.1 million, that will be sufficient to cover the 2.8 plus the 2.48 for phase two of Camp Allen. So we should be pretty even at that point.
Any potential overruns or anything, cost runs?
If I were to go school by school, yes, Camp Allen has exceeded the money they had allocated for Camp Allen in phase one. And we haven't gotten to phase two.
And if we don't do this, then we don't have half of the school?
No.
I just want to make a point.
It's a great question. What we would do is what we've always done, tap into the checking, the cash is there and make it happen. But like I said, at any time that that cash reduces it, then at any time that there's a call on that, we would have roughly $3 million that, of money that we couldn't pay out for something because we don't have it.
We just happen to be in a good position to clear up the FF and E component. And we're getting ready to close out the last school. And it'd be wonderful if we can close out the financials in a good position as well. And that's, we took that opportunity to do that. We may, we don't know what the end of this year is going to be. There may not be any fund balance for this year. We don't know yet. So it's just the perfect opportunity. We did talk about a lot of things that it can go towards, but do you want to clear up this piece so it won't be hanging over your head that I have a deficit here? Or just ignore it right now and let it go until we get to that position where you're going to need to cover it.
Ms. Camson?
Just real quick. So if we decided to follow the recommendation to clear up the debt, then that money comes and goes where?
Okay. What right now is?
Because isn't it just money we owe ourselves, right?
Right. We owe it ourselves. Right now, the operating fund for 2018 had a surplus of $3.1 million.
Right.
My CIP FF and E fund, which goes into the same cash account, has a deficit of $2.8 million. So the 3.1 was shipped from the operating budget over to the CIP budget to make the deficit go away.
That's a hard transfer. So note, this money is transferred immediately there.
But you can't spend it again.
And nobody can touch it.
Right.
Okay.
It just goes over to cover that piece.
Because again, some of that money, this is about money as we receive deposits from the state, from the city, from reimbursement for grants and things. But remember, we have a lot of those funds while in the checking account are already dedicated for certain things, such as indicated, the 10-month pay that goes over 12 months. So we have to have cash available to do that. We also, our federal grants are on a reimbursement basis. So we always have to spend money upfront for federal grants, Title I, II, III, IV, VI, 619, the preschool.
Regular CIP?
Mm-hmm.
The regular CIP?
The regular $3 million CIP. So we always have to spend that money upfront and have reimbursed. And so that's the reason for the availability, needing availability of cash in the bank in order to be able to accomplish those things. But we can't touch this money. There's nothing I can do with this money other than put it back to make sure that we do not have any deficits anywhere. This would be our, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Ingram, our last structural imbalance that we have within NPS. We had structural imbalances with the city that were related to us having to use these one-time funds in an operating budget. So that's the major city's structural imbalance. But we had some other things that we have been able to clean up over time. And this is the last structural imbalance on the NPS side.
Okay. So let me go back over our numbers then. I don't have the original report that you had given us about the breakdown of the funds. But I know that you wanted to allocate a certain amount for textbooks.
Yes.
Okay. And so the total pot of money that we have for the audited fund balance is how much again?
$4.3 million, I believe.
$4.3 million. And you were requesting how much for textbooks?
$1.28.
That's not a request, that's a requirement, isn't it?
We're allowed to do it. We can't use it for anything else. Once it goes into textbooks.
Oh, okay. And then so the remainder is?
The 3.1.
3.1 million. So when I did my calculation, the 3.1 million covers the 2.8 million that we needed to?
2.86.
2.86.
Plus the Camp Allen phase two.
Well, and then the Camp Allen thing is still a little short.
Well, once you move the 3.1 over, it will cover the 2.8 and it will leave $248,000 to go towards completing the furniture and fixture for phase two of Camp Allen. So we should be coming out pretty close, even keel if our projection of what we need to purchase for phase two comes on. That will pretty much clear us up and put us in balance with FF and E. That will pretty much clear us up and put us in balance with FFNE.
I don't have an issue with the textbooks. And I, I have a better understanding now about how these numbers, um, have been brought up, brought up, um, for the deficit and how we need to put it back in. I still feel that, um, the money that we had, uh, removed from the fine arts department, which was approximately seventy-five thousand.
Keep in mind too, when you go back to the city to ask for reappropriation, they tell you one-time expenditures.
Right.
Not, not reoccurring costs. And it still is subject to city manager approval with what we say, how we're going to spend the money. And, um, you know, we've been alerted by the, by the, you know, we, we've also talked to the people over on, on, with the budget perspective that, you know, giving them a heads up that we will be coming with a reappropriation. And then one thing they say is make sure it's one-time expenditures. So it's, you know, usually that's what they're looking for because if it's one-time, then if you do things that's going to be reoccurring, you are, you are impacting your future year's budgets. So do those things, that's going to be one-time in nature. So if you, if you're thinking about doing it for something that's going to be ongoing, then that's going to impact your twenty twenty budgets and everything else that-
Is that ongoing, isn't that a one-time restoration of those funds that were removed?
No, but that, that's, if it's, then if, if we restore it from these one-time funds this year, then the reduction will come again next year.
So the cut to the fine arts department was a permanent cut?
No, we're operating versus one-time funds.
I, I understand that.
Right.
But I thought that the cut on the fine arts funds were for supplies for them to use this year. And it sounds like, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, it sounds like what you're saying is that the fine arts department has received a permanent cut of seventy thousand dollars for supplies and, and-
It doesn't mean it wouldn't be restored in future budgets. But if you restore it with this, this does not equal the operating budget. So we would still have to go back in and determine where that seventy million. We didn't necessarily deem that to be a permanent cut, but we had to balance in order for the positions and the things that the board asked us to also fund. And so those were some options that, that we dealt with on that.
So if, if we have unfilled positions where this kind of money comes from, and they go through a few months, you know, summer into the fall, and we, and we then hire someone later, each of those months' salary sits there waiting to become a surplus or a, whatever you-
A fund balance.
A fund balance, thank you for the correction. So wouldn't that be a possibility of restoring this money for them in a few months?
Quite possible.
So I, um, and I don't think it's relevant to what we're talking about here. I've asked about the CSEP budget line, and I asked for a detail on it. And I think my last request was like on the fifteenth or something. But, um, sitting on the CSEP board and what we were presented as far as the budget, um, for the request, I think it was, what we presented in our budget book was like two hundred and eighty-six something thousand dollars. I brought it up on two separate occasions. But the CSEP's budget, um, request was thirteen thousand, um, as far as. And so I wanted those numbers so that I could, uh, look at it just to make sure that we were in line. But it seems thirteen thousand to two hundred and eighty-six thousand seems a long way off. And if there is, and we've already sent that over, I guess, for the approval on the budget, if there's additional funds that are sitting there, if those can't be redirected or whatever. But I just wanted some clarity on it, that's why I was asking for that information.
Well, certainly, um, I'll let Ms. Ingram start and then I'll chime in on that.
I, I did some research. Typically, that, that GL line is not just CSEP. Special Ed has also special placement and alternative places. And Ms. Mitchell can give you the names of those places. And it's all tuition type based that we will send special ed children to, um, that we cannot service ourselves. So why it may say tuition, uh, regional programs is not just CSEP. So i- if I went back to the historical perspective for the last three or four years, and what happens is sometimes we may not have, we will budget a projection of number of students. What's the name of the house in Portsmouth? Hope House and-
Holiday.
Holiday House in Portsmouth where we have on occasion send students to, which is quite expensive. And I think each year, if we go back to budget transfers, if we don't send students to Holiday House, then what we do is we take those funds there and reallocate into other areas into, uh, special education. One thing that you cannot do in special education, and we try to steer away from, is transferring funds out of special ed because of the maintenance of effort. There's a federal law that says that you have to spend at least the same amount of dollars the previous, the current year that you did in the previous year. And we have to validate and send up to the state from that piece. So typically, there are always needs in special education, so we just transfer it. And, and, um, and actually, the budget transfer that was in the board packet for last month included monies from that GL line, out of that GL line to other GL lines in transportation to say what the needs were. So I would just highly recommend that we not transfer out of special ed because typically there are always needs for special ed. Even when we have, we cannot fill positions like OTPT or even teaching positions. And, and Dr. James Mitchell need to do contract services to provide for students. We would transfer those funds and not spend in personnel line items or tuition if we don't have to spend, send them to Holiday House and to contract services so we can provide those services. There are some exceptions, rare exceptions where you are allowed to make reductions. But typically, that's one area such that we want to make sure we maintain maintenance of effort, that we don't lower transporta-, I mean, special ed because of the needs. And we still constantly have students coming in and rotating and trying to provide the services that they require.
Manager, I appreciate Ms. Ingram, the, um, the explanation. That's now the third different explanation I received on that budget line item on CSEP. And I would respectfully request again, um, for the detail because this is, that's totally different. It says CSEP, it doesn't say any of these other things down there. But I was told the last time we had, we brought it up in the meeting, that it was for staff salaries because they had to align with the changes that we were-
Never say that was for staff salaries. I said that was for our tuition costs. You asked what would the increase be related to? And I said, we project based on what this, the per pupil cost would be. And what CSEP, because they don't have facilities and things, most of their increases are related to their staff increases. That was what I was saying on that. But in response to your specific question, we went back and did the deeper research. And what you're hearing now is what Ms. Ingram has, and we will have that to you, um, if not this evening, first thing in the morning.
I appreciate that.
So is there a motion on the floor to accept the use of the four point three million audited fund balance for reappropriation for textbooks and replacement of the, uh, deficit for FFNE?
Yes, I approve that we, uh, accept and approve the superintendent's recommendation.
Second. There's a second.
Unreadiness. The seventy-five thousand that you mentioned in regards to the music fund, um, it's one-time, I think it was, uh, for supplies, equipment.
I, I have the, it has on here aligned part-time and non-personnel budget with FY twenty eighteen actuals. That's sixty-five thousand dollars. And then for art, it's aligned part-time and non-personnel budget with FY twenty eighteen actuals. That's roughly nine thousand, so we're looking at seventy-five thousand.
My concern was about, about that is that one of the requests that I made when we were asking for some additional instructional support positions to be added, um, to the, to the new budget, was that none of those additions would come off the backs of the teachers. And, and so I misunderstood apparently where that money was coming from, the way it was worded. It was not clear to me that they were being stripped of a huge portion of their, uh, teacher instructional supplies. And I think that's why I have a concern. Let, let me just finish.
Ms. Ingram, now both have our hands up on that one, that's all I'm saying, yeah.
Um, and if that's incorrect, that was, it looks, it looks like, I mean, I know when Ms.- Doctor Mess, I can't, Miss, okay. I thought you were, but people were calling you doctors. I didn't know, then you got, you know, a degree over the summer. But, uh, anyway, when, when it was put up there, and it was put up there, the source, but I did not understand the source was taking away the supplies that the teachers would be using with their children. And so that's the concern I have because I know that I said a number of times during budget discussions that we need to increase instructional support, whether it's academic or fine arts or whatever. But it was not to be done at the expense of the teachers or the children. And so now I find out that it is, and that's what my, now I'm sitting here torn now because I certainly see your idea of balancing the budget. I, that's great, we, and we really do need to do that. But it, it is a concern I have, and it's leaving me as we get ready to vote, not ready to vote because all I can think of is that the very thing that we asked for was not to take any money away from teachers and students. Uh, that we need to find other ways, other cuts, and there are always other ways, that did not involve a loss to teachers and children. So I'm kind of, I'm stuck because I really agree with the balancing of the budget. But I'm not happy with the way that this money disappeared for that teaching position. I mean, maybe we please address this.
So thank you for having it out, I don't have to pull it up. The statement says align part-time and non-personnel budget with FY twenty eighteen actuals. That was for the music office and for the art office. This was a, dealt with both what were our actual expenditures in the last fiscal year for part-time support and work, as well as any additional things. It was not a reduction of anything that they currently have. This was making sure they were kept whole with what they currently have. We did not reduce anything. We just looked at what did they actually spend as it related to, uh, part-time personnel and any non-personnel expenditures. And we just, alignment means to go to that point, so we didn't reduce them. Ms. Ingram, will you please add additional?
But that's what I was going to say, because of the wording, when we do our budgeting, we look at trends for one or two years back. And a lot of times, we go back to what did you spend in the previous year? So evidently, in the previous year, that expenditures there, what, what the quest was, were higher than what that expenditure was. So we didn't totally cut them away. It is to align it with what they actually spent in the previous year. Now, we're, we're currently in twenty nineteen, I know that. But when they are developing their budget for twenty twenty, they are looking at my current budget and they'll, we, we also go back and look at the historical spending. A lot of times, in some of these instances, the, the, the money that we have in unassigned fund balance is not all just salaries. Some of it is departments have not spent all of their non-personnel dollars as well. The bulk of it is in salaries. So if we go back to look at twenty twenty, all of the dollars were not spent. So what we were saying is we're going to be realigning it with your twenty eighteen budget.
Okay, but hold on a second. Two years ago, eleven positions were cut, eleven positions. So if you go back a year from now, uh, if you go back a year previously, you're going to see that there, there may not have been that alignment. But if you go back two years, you're going to see they were operating at a completely different level. Am I misunderstanding that?
We did not cut art positions, I don't believe.
Six and five.
We did art, music and PE, but most of the position, I don't think any were art positions. I have to go back and-
Fine arts, I think is what we were saying, fine arts, which would cover all of them.
There were also positions that, that the coordinator eliminated themselves to turn into part-time dollars. So that is a loss of a position, not because of reduction, but because of the decision that I want to take a classroom teaching position and turn it into dollars for something else.
Okay. I don't want to, I don't want to, um, misrepresent what was done. But I, I'm pretty sure that there were eleven positions that were cut, and I can go back and get the details. And I don't want us to drag into a, a deeper discussion about this. But this is the issue that we are wrestling with. Do we, do we have some funds in the budget that we can put back the seventy-five thousand dollars for mute, for fine arts?
Dr. Gabriel?
Well, I was going to ask, but can we separate that from what we're doing here with this?
We can, we can do a line item vote, we can go textbooks, we can go different or-
So I was kind of going to say the same thing, Ms. Smith. We are, we, process-wise, uh, you know, the board-
You voted on the budget.
Well, no, we, we voted on a proposed budget that we've sent to council.
Right, right.
Counsel has not acted yet that I know of.
No, they haven't.
So at some point, the, whatever the council action is going to come back to the board. The board then is, if there are any adjustments, we would get a, another set of recommendations from the administration. Ultimately, the board is going to take a final vote on that budget for the upcoming year. So to me, this conversation would be a part of ever the final vote that the board decides to take for the, the budget. This piece here, as far as the, the, the motion that's on the table, I think we've, uh, you know, if you look at some other school divisions that have, you know, had conversations and issues with the board and the council around these, uh, uh, fund balances. And I, I think we're in a very good position, um, with the, the, the council, with the city manager and administration, with work that's been several years to get us away from one-time funds, get us to the funding formula and so forth. Probably recall, because I know we were both kind of frustrated with the, uh, the previous- Just trust me. And we said we might find ourselves in this, in this position.
Right.
So I know that, um, um, Dr. Boone, city manager Smith, have worked and communicated. I think if we can act on this, and then, once the city council acts on their budget and what the impact is on us, then we can have conversations around where we are on the final budget that we pass that could deal with things from art to who knows what.
I was thinking about that, I, I was thinking about that, that's why I put it, put the, asked for the vote. You know, because I was thinking, we do have another opportunity. And we do know that there are some staffing vacancies, you know, right now. Um, that is a, not a one-time fund, but an ongoing fund. Um, and so I just, my comfort level with supporting this, which I, I, I do want to support because I have a better understanding, um, would be better if, if I had some reassurance to know that, you know, we are going to have that conversation and that there will be effort made to try to put these funds back in. Yes.
We, we fully hear the questions, the comments and the concerns. Um, and certainly, we can go back and look in within the budget, um, prior to the final adoption by the board to see where we could address this. But I will remind you, singling out two departments when other departments had budget increases that were not funded, sends a message of, sends a message. Not everyone, as I said in, in my very first presentation, I think on February twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh, that, um, requests are simply that until we put the budget together. And ours is a recommendation to the board until finalized and by the board. And so not everyone gets or got what they had asked for. So I'm, I'm, I'm just, again, for information's sake, we would certainly go back in and scrub the budget again. But, um, it's going to have to come from somewhere else in order to do this. And to your point about we, we will have vacancies this year, that's true. But again, that's crossing fiscal years. You're asking us to put money from this fiscal year into next fiscal year, and we can't legally do that. That's why any funds that we have remaining at the end of a fiscal year, we have to ask city council for reappropriation. Uh, because as a school district in Virginia, we are not allowed to carry forth operating dollars from budget year to budget year. That's not a Melinda rule, that's a state rule.
So there's a motion on the floor, there's a second. Is there any further discussion?
So just wanted for clarity, um, when we make, we vote on this particular motion here, it is to designate and almost restrict these dollars for this purpose only. So you can't come back and, and change that. So, um, I just wanted to raise that as clarity. Um, and-
And guessing this one, so with the new camp allen, had they already moved, like, instruments and supplies? Or do they have other things that they have to do?
Well, see, phase one is already done, and phase two, they're doing new rooms.
New rooms.
So we will have to outfit the new rooms. Some of the old space in the phase one can be moved over into the new phase two because we used phase one rooms to repurpose them for classroom space 'cause it was insufficient. So now we have to go back and furnish those areas for the intended purpose.
And is that what this money here is, the 245,000 for phase two?
Yes, phase two.
So with that, that debt's gone. All this debt's gone.
Yes.
But we can... All five schools will be complete and fully equipped.
And then we have to look to the facilities committee to come with recommendations on what to do next.
Well, that's exactly why we said we were gonna try to...
Right. Y'all have a tall order task. Okay. All right. Ms. Jackson, if you could call the roll, please. Thank you. Aye.
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 Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye. Next, on to policy discussion. Ms. Vaseen, Ms. Martin, there's quite a few policies on our board docs.
Let's get it real quick before we start busy. Policies, and I know we have like 10 minutes, so maybe some other time, but the advisory reports, is there a time that we look at those?
So that's what was allocated for the 2.03 on the agenda, and that's when I said just read it. It's a report for your information, and we'll come back to it.
Oh, I looked at... Oh, I thought it was a report 'cause I couldn't find the letter.
But they will be coming back to us May 15.
All right, 'cause I did have some... Okay. All right.
So Madam Chair, I know that we're moving into this next section here. I guess I would ask from policy if there are... I know that probably a lot of these are just small changes that we're making,
but just the ones that are any major ones?
Yes. Yes. So that's absolutely right. I'm, you know, I think a couple of meetings ago, I gave you the heads up that this time of year, you know, we get a big packet of policies from our policy service, the BSBA. And so a large portion, as you stated, you know, a large portion of these that you see posted here are a reflection of changes to the code, legal reference updates, and cross-references, with some, I think, some editorial updates to, and typos corrected and things like that. What I do wanna draw your attention to, as we talked about at the last meeting, is, and it's toward the end of this list, if you're looking on board docs, but is policy IKB homework, and then policy KKA, service animals in public schools. So I'd like to focus our discussion on those two right now. At the last meeting, as you know, we had our first reading of policy IKB homework, and we also put it out for public comment. We received one public comment on that policy. So what I'm asking the board is to allow the policy committee to go back. We heard some... We got some feedback from board members at the last meeting. And we wanna take that feedback. And any others, if anyone has anything else to add today related to the homework policy, I'd like to hear... We'd like to hear those as well. And then we're gonna take that back and update that policy with those changes and then have it ready for the board on May 15. Okay, so, yes.
Number six.
Which one? Are you on IKB?
Oh, I'm sorry. Isn't that the first one you called?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, okay. 'Cause I pulled out those two. Yeah. Number six, teachers should seek to determine the causes if a student regularly fails.
IK... The IKBR is ours. Which is about a million. That's the one you probably wanna be looking at.
Oh.
The Rs are the regulation.
IKB.
Oh, that's in this case.
It's in there altogether, aren't they?
You're right. Go ahead.
Oh, right. So it says now for six, excessive homework should be avoided. Does... I thought we had a discussion at the last time we talked about homework about how there are children who need extra support.
Right.
And I thought what we were putting in had to do with that the schools... The school has a responsibility to give support to students who are not able to do homework at home by providing tickets for them to come in early, to get assistance, or something.
Right. And so number four, so I appreciate you bringing that up because that is one of the comments and pieces of feedback that I know you provided at the last meeting that we haven't yet incorporated into this track, which we will. We will talk about it, consider that as we update it. So today, we just said that we were gonna bring back to the board, you know, what feedback we had received from the public comment period, and also if the board had any other further feedback, and that we're gonna incorporate that.
So that's... So I'll see that later somewhere if the policy...
You will see it all at you.
We wanted to make all the changes. If there were additional comments from the community, we wanted to take those in consideration and make all the changes at one time.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And when it comes back to the down that we know we have the information from the public, it was just one, we would now make... After today's discussion, if there are any other changes or recommendations, we will then make those changes, provide those changes to the policy committee before it comes back to the board.
Okay, 'cause that was the one concern I had about this, is that the children often are not doing it because they don't have enough support.
And number four, to your point, you know, about having, you know, students' access to resource materials has to be considered.
Oh, I agree with that.
Is incorporated already, but, you know, the detail that you're...
But this is more than rec... Access to resource. This is actual support to help the student get the work done.
Right.
And this really hits our low-income kids. This is a big hit for those children.
And some of that, we can... We'll do probably what schools currently do. Some will work with kids before school. They'll can stay back after school. Some during lunch. They have lunch clubs, lunch buddies.
Yes, there are a lot of ways you can do it, and many, many, many schools are already doing it. It's just, I'd like to see it in the policy.
So what we'll... If you don't mind, we'll look at that for... We'll look at the wording, but gives examples as part of the regulation because the regulation may change and wouldn't require approval from the board, but we can then give more specifics as you see.
I don't think number four addresses it.
No, I'm saying part of what you're having the access fees, but I...
Oh, okay. But all the details. Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Chavis. I understand. Thank you for listening. That was just my one concern with that one.
Yeah, we made note of it in the last, and we just wanted to wait until we had all the feedback before we did any final changes to bring to the committee.
Right. Is there any other... And I do, I should mention too, Ms. Chavis shared, you know, that they had vetted this with the principal associations and...
At our last April principal meeting, we informed the principals that the homework policy that they're giving feedback on, but that it was posted for additional feedback. So we made that announcement to them, and if they had any additional comments or feedback to give that to us, we've not received anything at this point.
So, Madam Chair, I can, the... I guess my comment here is in relation that we have one public comment on it.
Yeah.
And so I guess my question around that is, I know we have these items, these policies that are located on board docs. But is there another, I guess, more accessible way, or if we are, that's on the website that just kinda says, here are policies that the board is, you know, that's clear that you don't have to dive into, and a way that we can maybe even capture where people can type something in? And as we're doing that, I... So I don't...
That was the way that those two policies were listed for public feedback.
Yeah, and it was pushed out.
They were online on there.
They typed in their comment. Only one person commented. And it was on the public discussion last business meeting, and no one commented on either of the policies.
Maybe there's a...
And, oh, I'm sorry. I was gonna add that it was also pushed out on social media and...
Was it a robo-call too, or no?
I don't... I didn't get it. I feel... I feel like there may... It may have been included with... But yeah, I know it was definitely pushed out.
I got high-quality pre-K, three and four applications.
And kindergarten.
Yep, nutrition services.
So maybe that's where I saw it.
No, it was advertised.
Yeah.
But it was advertised. But I under... You know, I had the same thought, you know, how do we...
We're trying to put forth the best effort to get the biggest community engagement before we go through such a big policy change.
And I've shared that with people too, yes.
And I know that we all kinda have, you know, we have our Facebooks and things like that, but, you know, maybe we just, as a board, make a conscious effort that whenever something like comes out there that we push it, we tweet it out and just to, you know, and ask for people to write comments.
So the next steps on these two policies, just for planning sake, on the May 15th meeting, we are looking to adopt... Where'd my notes go? Adopt IKB and KKA. I mean, we're gonna look to adopt all of them, but now that we've gone through two hearings and public comment, we need to make sure that they would be put on, under the consent agenda.
There would be these two.
Yes. No, these two plus the others that I just described, you know, what the changes.
The ones that were just to align us with the state.
Did you have something to add, Dr. Bertson?
Oh, no. I was just agreeing that, yes, that was the plan that we agreed on.
Yeah. I actually have a question of one of the other policies, and it can go back to the policy committee, and you can email me separately just for clarification. It's policy JHCA.
JHCA.
Physical examinations of students.
Yeah, let me pull it up. Okay.
So on the current version that we have, Section E, it says, "A physical examination shall not be required of any child whose parent or guardian objects on religious grounds and who shows no visible evidence of sickness." I just wanted to get some background information on what religious grounds do we have where we would say we wouldn't accept a physical exam?
So we've had in the past, you know, where as part of the various religious exemptions that someone may feel that it's intrusive for various beliefs, and so...
I've seen that with immunizations, but the actual physical exam? I just saw that, and it just...
Unfortunately, there are... I'm sorry.
Occasionally.
There are some parents who don't do doctors.
Right.
Right.
They know they have to have the shots.
Certain kinds of healthcare providers, right. Yeah.
Different forms, you know, it's just to...
Not many, but...
Yeah, not many.
When occasionally they've come through.
Yeah.
I can check the statute on that. I suspect that is required.
Right.
Okay. It just stood out to me.
I'll send you one.
I have some.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so that's... We'll check the... We'll double-check the statute on this policy. And Mr. Jordan, did you have a...
Yeah, just a clarity on one, and just wanted to raise some quick attention to some others. So under BDDG for minutes, inside the policy, it notes that minutes may be taken in closed session, but they would still fall under exempt. And I know we've had different conversations about it, so I just wanted to make sure that what we have there is aligned with... Is aligned. So if it's the case that you can do it, then fine. If it's the case that you can't do it, then make sure the policy reflects that.
Right.
I can double-check that.
Well, that's my point, that the policy says that you can. And I think our practice has been that you cannot, and I just wanna make sure we're clear on that.
Right. And so I know I was one of the board members that had asked about having minutes in closed session, and so I looked at the state, the statute on it, and it does say that a board may take minutes in closed session.
Actually, when we were looking at the PPA, found some minutes that we took. I just want us to make sure that A were consistent, and then two is a board, we're clear on it.
Yeah, okay.
Similarly, and I wanna go into them, but I just wanna point out that several of the policies that we have here are areas that we've touched on recently. We've talked about school activity funds. We've often discussed about board-staff communications. What was the other one? Let's see.
Operations.
KGA. Where is that? Oh, sales and solicitations in schools, and then also just the qualifications and duties for the superintendent. So I just wanna make sure we're all... I know we're not necessarily compressed for time now, but when it comes time for the vote, that we can just make sure we take another look at them individually, make sure we're comfortable and clear on those policies.
Yeah, I agree with you on that because I did my review, but there were other things that did pop up, especially with some of those ones we've just... And I think there was PE was also in there, physical education, you know. So, oh, I think that's one of the last ones.
That is not on this. PE should not be on here, yeah. The health education and PE, that should not be.
Okay, sorry. Maybe I was looking at a different one then.
It's in the stat, but in DOT, we recommend the pulling that because we've gotta look at it in relation to...
So that's the first thing, an ongoing conversation, yes.
So anyway, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, these are important policies, so make sure that you have read them, you understand the changes, and if there are questions that come up, please share them, email.
Right. And, you know, as lo... So long as we don't receive any feedback from anyone, then, you know...
You're gonna assume.
We, you know, they go on the consent agenda. So do look, when you get these policies, you know, read through them, make sure you agree with them. And if there are any changes, to let Ms. Martin and myself know.
And we're gonna be working really hard over the next month to get as many passed. We have a lot of intense discussions about them in our policy committee meetings. And some of them, like homework and dress code and things like that, we wanna put that in the handbook, which is being published in June.
In June. Okay.
Well, not print, June, July.
June, July. Yeah, okay.
So we don't wanna have... End up having these tabled in any way. We wanna be able to move forward.
So we're looking to do these at our next...
Well, we'll... Like dress code, for instance.
Yeah, just some of them. The ones that are up for public comment is, you know, this... We're trying to put into the handbook bullying.
The code of conduct.
But not all of these.
And then the other ones we're looking at, like June.
We just wanna keep moving forward, so keep that in mind.
They'll be coming forward in June.
Is it possible we can just get... We can define that with an email to us as to which ones we're gonna do this month?
Yeah, I believe we have provided a timeline at least for you guys for agenda planning purposes.
It was... It addressed, well, it addressed KKA and IKB, the service animals, homework, CMA. I don't think I have one for dress code. Okay.
Okay.
I'll go back and look. Yeah. 'Cause DLT has to review, which is why, you know, the collaboration between the two.
And we're also still... I guess I'll bring it up because it's come up several times in our business meetings. We're still looking at our recess policy and comparing, making sure it aligns with our wellness policy. That's not published in our handbook, but it's still an important policy for next school year that we wanna make sure that we, yeah, stay on top of.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea because there are a lot of parents who are speaking to us about it.
Yeah.
The non-parents, non-orphal parents too.
Right. I wanna... And I just wanna make one point of clarification. So our recess is not a separate policy. It's part of our wellness policy. And the School Health Advisory Council, and I know, you know, we talked about it in there. So the recommendation will come from there about how to align... 'Cause, you know, we've had discussion. It's quite complex in terms of what areas are impacted by what's in the policy. So we have to take some careful consideration about that. And I think we've had a couple of conversations previously, not only in the board meeting, but in policy committee meeting, that there is some inconsistency between our health ed and physical education policy as compared to our school wellness policy. So we have to make sure that they're aligned, which is what we talked about in the School Health Advisory Council. Right, right. So that piece is being... Is still being worked through.
Well, kinda going back to the earlier conversation that we had about feedback. I mean, we had that conversation together. I don't... As we're working through these details, I think it's important that we keep everybody abreast on what those details are because we do receive concerned feedback every meeting from a group of parents who, I think, they're present at the meeting, but I also think that they are representing a larger group also. And we should do our due diligence to make sure that we're keeping them informed of the actions that we are taking to address their concern, to show that we are looking at it from an administrative perspective. And then if there are budgetary implications, we need to know about them. I don't think, again, going back to giving them an answer, if we can come to them and say, this is what it would take in order to have
They need a response.
forty-minute recess. "-forty-minute recess, this is what it would take." Whether or not we do it, thumbs up or thumbs down, you know, that's up to us, but we need to know as a board, what will it take, what are the policy implications, what is the timeline, 'cause if this is gonna affect change for September school year, you know.
September of-
What I'm just saying.
Yeah, so, so, right now, right now, we're having a policy discussion, so, following the process, we're not at a point yet where we've adopted any changes to any, any of the policies, so, before we start talking about what budget allocations, you know, what they look like for this, we have to first get through this piece. So, right now, you know, and I've, I've shared, I think we've shared, we've had some of this discussion before, we had it in Shack, and that's still being worked through, so until they, we, we kinda come back with a full vetting and with a recommendation to the board, that's kinda where we are right now. So, as far as response back to individuals, I think that's, you know, beyond, right, beyond in the sense, like, outside of what we're talking about right now. But I know, just from a policy standpoint, you know, I've tried explaining to folks, you know, where we are, you know, what our process is, and so, you know, I agree that explaining to people, you know, where we are and what the process is, that's important, but.
Oh, no, 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 I was just-
Okay. So, so, to add to, Ms. Martin says, you know, she gave, you know, the heads up for next month, we're, we're gonna have, we have several policies, we also have several additional V S B A policies that are still being reviewed and considered by both the D L T and the Policy Committee. So, just know, we're gonna have several next month as well.
For the June work session.
For the June work session.
Consider it policy season.
Yes.
Yes, that's right. Okay, okay, sounds good.
Mr. Jordan, did you have anything else?
Okay.
Is everyone good with policy discussion?
We appreciate the work.
All right.
Okay, great. All right, thanks, everyone, for allowing us to try to squeeze some extra time in for our next discussion, which will be a closed-session meeting.
Okay, before you go, just one quick question, do we have a meeting on the twenty-second?
Of May?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
What, what time is that meeting?
Four o'clock, and when, and agenda planning tomorrow.
Yes, so, we have the fifteenth, and then we have the twenty-second.
Okay, so, when, this is something that I brought with me.
Oh, I, I-
We have, we have a timeline that we discussed with Dr. Boone about the evaluation, and so, and tomorrow, we have agenda planning, so, I was gonna bring this up, so that we make sure that we had appropriate notification for our meeting, but the time right now is at four o'clock on May twenty-second.
You know what, you're right, yeah.
So-
So, that'll be a exec meeting.
That'll be executive meeting, yes, and I will, yes.
So, we have the board recognition next week.
On May eighth.
Then, the business meeting on the fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, and then, we have the eval on the twenty-second.
Yes.
And then, right now, we're free pending, we're not sure yet, when, do, can you remind, when does City Council suppose to vote on the budget?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, okay, all right, so then, we're still looking at June?
For, yes, for final adoption.
We would do the final adoption?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then, there's also a C I P discussion.
Well, I was hoping, we're hoping that if council finalizes this on the fourteenth, and we're gonna talk about this tomorrow, the agenda planning, but if we can have flexibility to amend the agenda, to approve it, that would allow us to get contracts out, rather than waiting to June.
Okay.
Or amend the agenda for the fifteenth.
For the, for, right, if council takes this action, improves the budget on fourteen, we're gonna discuss tomorrow the, the request to do a, amend the agenda to include final approval of the budget, which will allow us to begin the process of developing contracts and getting those distributed. Otherwise, we would run us very close to the end of school year, if not later.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we're meeting every single, on the twen, well, I'm out of town next week.
Lauren, what we'll do is, I'll, I'll make sure that, just pull, pull up on your email the, the timeline that we agreed on, and then, we're gonna finalize everything in agenda planning tomorrow, and we'll make sure that invites get sent out from Ms. Jackson to everyone.
So, those of us who already have something scheduled on the off weeks, as you know, trying to schedule stuff on the off weeks.
I know.
That's what I was asking.
Like an out-of-town trip, I'm gonna be in Florida.
I know.
I have a mandatory meeting.
Let's rub it in.
Yeah.
So, is there something on the twenty-ninth too, then?
No.
Never mind, I'll look.
Listen.
I have a missed a single meeting, and I'm missing the board recognition, the kids' being recognized meeting.
Okay, all right, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Go into closed session, I might make a motion.
Second.
Ms. Jackson? Oh, it was Adele made the motion, and Lauren seconded. Oh, if you could read the motion, yeah.
Move that members of the school board go into closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of Section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, as amended for, A, discussion or consideration of the performance of specific officers and employees of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection one of the above cited code section. The subject of this section of the motion concerns the handling of a matter concerning a specific student. Discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic, in a scholastic record pursuant to subsection two of the above cited code section. The subject of this portion of the session is discussion of student matter referenced in subsection of this, of this motion. See consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members, consultants, or attorneys pertaining to actual or probable litigation or other specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection seven and eight of the above cited code section. The subject of this section of the motion refers to advice of counsel as needed regarding legal issues related to the personnel and student matters identified above. For the vote, Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Yeah, sure, go ahead and take, you know, five minutes, and then, we'll come back in, they need to take out the microphone. So, we'll come back at six-twenty-five.